Glad to lead this with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Council membership, would you please pray for us tonight?
Yes ma'am. Heavenly Father, I just thank you so much for the rain that you've sent our way, Lord. We just thank you so much that you provide all of our needs. And you know, the timing is the perfect timing. But we just ask you with us tonight as we undertake the business of our city, Lord, give us the wisdom to make the right decisions and the decisions that are the best for the welfare of our community. Or we just ask you with the first responders as they are out working, working the streets and keeping our citizens all safe. Lord, we just love you and we thank you so much for what you do for Level Inn and for each one of us. And so we pray in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. At this time, we have the pleasure to, we're gonna do the oath of office and badge pinning ceremony for our Level Inn Police Department.
Captain Land, do you want to join me up here? It is an absolute honor and privilege to be here with you guys tonight and to be promoting Captain Land from Sergeant. Captain Land was born and raised in Level Inn. He graduated from Level Inn High School and then went into town, attended South Plains College. That's where he went to the academy at, and he began working with the Level Inn Police Department in September of 2005. He's held the roles of patrol officer, SRO, K-9 officer, and patrol sergeant. He also has his Master TCO license, FTO instructor, both regular and firearms instructor. He's received a Medal of Valor and has also been named the Officer of the Year. He's married to Amy and has three sons, Ty, Clay, and Crockett. Ty's also married to his wife Autumn. And they have a beautiful granddaughter Bristol, which she caught the room whenever that you guys came, when she came in. I would have went over and tried to steal her, but I don't want to cry. So it is my absolute honor to promote Captain Land. We interviewed three very qualified candidates and Captain Land came out on top, so his wife, Amy, is going to be doing the pinning. You guys can come up here for pictures if you want. Get another picture of your best, yes. So you want to do family first and then PD family? Are we gonna get one with all of you guys? All families?
We have four of them.
Okay, let me get this one and then y'all can. Is it one up there, I guess? Well, I'm gonna check your bus. It's fine. That's right. Take several of them. Y'all can. You wanna go take your smile, let's mirror. Okay, I think that's a little. Hold on, everybody say, who, everybody that you want, all your family, you want this part of your family, because we want to get every picture you want while we have everybody here.
Let's do one with you.
Yeah. Wait, baby, you get over there and I was looking.
No, I'm done with that picture.
Oh.
Pretty good Christmas card, I think.
We're making one though. You have more family, you have, we're gonna do PD your best. Me, Mayor and Council, because they're gonna be here all night.
You gotta be here all night. Moody, I was going to back the height of the sand.
To your left, because I want that logo in the middle.
She wants the logo in the middle, so we got some.
And you're also the tallest, so maybe.
I know, that's why you're wearing it.
Okay, guys. That's such wonderful words. Yes, it is. Now I can go speed, because you all. They were gonna leave right behind you, but it's okay. Picture of the Chief and the Captains?
Yeah.
I know, I'm walking. Oh, he's still taking pictures. He just keeps smiling. Councilman Howell?
His council, yeah, and city manager.
Yeah, the manager.
No, council, yeah.
Excellent. Go on, get them all while you're here. See, y'all want to. We got everybody here.
Later, get a picture with me.
Go, why not? Okay, we, we're on.
We do not have any statements by citizens.
Okay, no statements by citizens? I'd just like to say how proud I am of Captain Land. I'm gonna work on calling him Captain Land instead of Ty, like I've known him my entire life. But we are just so blessed to have you, blessed that you stayed and blessed that you are here with us and you're gonna do an amazing job. Congratulations. Again, no statements by citizens, so we'll go into our first item of business, which is to consider and take necessary action to approve the minutes of the April 28, 2025 regular meeting. Any questions on the minutes of that meeting?
No, I move that we approve the minutes from our April 28, 2025 regular meeting.
Motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed with that motion carries? Item number two is to consider and take necessary action on Resolution Number 2025 dash oh seven, updating the City of Level Inn authorized representatives for the seized funds account.
Mayor and Council?
Mayor and Council, I'll turn it over to Cynthia here in just a bit, but we brought something similar to this to you last meeting. And what we thought at first was an administrative error on my part, ended up being a better way to do things. So you did approve the authorized bank representatives and signatories for all of our major city accounts. And now we'll talk specifically and have a resolution specifically for seized funds.
Hi Cynthia.
Good evening. So as Andrea said, we're speaking specifically about the seized funds, which relates to PD. Historically, the police chief has been primary on there. So with the appointment of Chief O'Brien, we just want to get our records updated, get her as an authorized signature on the police seized funds.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2025 dash oh seven, updating the City of Level Inn authorized representatives for the seized funds account.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
With that, none opposed, motion carries. Item number three is to consider and take necessary action and issue any necessary order to abate, repair, structure, or demolish regarding substandard structure located at seventeen ten Austin, legal description, Williams Edition, Level Inn Block Three Lot Six. Hi, Eva.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, Council. Subject property seventeen ten Austin Street, on January twenty eighth, we had a public hearing. And the owner was requesting time to repair and the council did not take action pending information from the owner. We were looking for loan information and a detailed scope of work to complete the repair. Just gonna give you a reminder of what we're looking at. Okay, and he did provide a scope of work to me, we'll go over that real quick. So according to what he gave me for the outside, he's asking for thirty days to complete. Just a few points there, he needs to level the southwest corner of the structure, replace front and rear doors and trim, replace windows and trim, insulate walls and replace siding, and repair the roof with sheet metal and trim. And picture of the inside to remind us what we're looking at. And then for the inside, again, he's asking for thirty days to complete. Replace repair shower in the toilet area, plumbing fixtures throughout the house, cosmetic work such as sheet rock repair, and there'll need to be some electrical work in the kitchen as well as upgrading the meter to a two hundred amp with a bypass. So in all, what he is asking for is sixty days to complete the repair, thirty days for the outside, thirty days for the inside. He did say he did secure a loan, so he can do the work, so he is requesting sixty days from council to do the work.
Is that enough time for him to realistically?
I.
That's a lot of work.
In, in my opinion, yeah. You know, he felt pretty confident about it, but in my opinion, I think he's gonna need some more time. I mean, I was gonna shoot like ninety days, but whatever y'all think, that is a lot of work to do.
While I was looking through that and reading that, unless, unless that's his only job and he has accrued. And it's a small house, but that's a lot of work.
Yes, sir, I agree.
Has he purchased any of the materials?
Not, not to my knowledge. He visited with me a couple of weeks back. He actually had a meeting in Love it for something else and he came to visit with me. And the information that I provided you is what he gave me. So at the time, he had not purchased any material or anything like that yet, so.
He wanted to wait until he knows, because if he goes out. I will say, I, he went to the work and did the loan. I mean, obviously, he's serious, yeah.
And that's what we want. We don't want to seriously down people, get these things.
We want to keep it on the roll.
Absolutely.
And what a cute little house it is.
Yes. So your recommendation would be ninety rather than sixty, be more realistic.
Yes, I mean, it could be more, but I mean, in my opinion, I don't think sixty days is enough, so. I mean, I think if we gave him another thirty days, or if y'all felt like y'all wanted to give more, I think he'd be more than appreciative of that, but whatever y'all decide to do so.
We want to be realistic and not have to come back to us again.
Yes.
And go, oh, we need more time.
Absolutely.
We know right now, he's gonna need a little bit more.
Yes, sir.
He has no time in there for wind or weather or.
Right.
Anything like that.
Yes, sir.
Because of our current weather, I was thinking like a hundred and twenty days, that's double what he's asking, but I think more than that.
Whatever y'all think.
You wanna go, you wanna go ninety or a hundred and twenty?
Just let him do it.
Be realistic.
And I'll keep you all up to date, just to make sure progress is being made, so.
All right, you do a great job on that.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move the council approve an extension of ninety days for that home on seventeen ten Austin Street for reclamation.
Okay. Leave a motion in a second, all in favor? Any opposed with that, the motion carries. Thank you, Eli.
Thank you.
Would we do it like that? If we, if we have to come back, do we have to send out all the notices and everything else again? Or if we issued that order now, would we not have to send that even if we do an extension? Just question on, or later would that?
Slater, was that motion sufficient, or should we do that differently?
Should we, should we issue the orders for abating, ending this, or, because if we have to revisit this and redo it, don't we have to send all those notices and everything back out again as well?
Sure, if I may.
The way that I have typically done these is with an agreement with him that they've agreed to extend this. But if you don't do it, we do not start over. Okay, that's.
I just wanted to make sure.
Cover ourselves.
Make sure he.
It's called skin more work.
Thank you, yes. Item number four is to consider and take necessary action on ordinance one thousand ninety-four, amending rules for the city of Level Inn RV Park on a second reading.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before we do the second reading tonight, I would like to recommend one change in the RV park rules. Instead of doing the thirty days between stays, we would like to try to bump that up to forty-five days. And that's just because we do have habitual people coming by and staying every thirty days and it is taking up space. So we wanted to get your opinion and see what you thought, but we thought staff would, would suggest forty-five days instead of a thirty.
You guys are the ones that are calculating who's staying there, and if that's what you're seeing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you think these people are gonna come every forty-five days?
It's possible, but we're hoping this will deter them a little bit more. We do have some regulars that like to make the rounds in some of the RV parks in the area, so we hopefully giving them a little bit more time, we won't see them as often, and maybe that'll deter that.
And what are they coming back for every thirty days? This is just a free place.
Just a free place to stay, it's not. No, it wouldn't be anything particular to town, it's just typically a three, you know, three free nights and then they're moving on to the next, so.
Would there be a problem if we limited that to three times a year? I mean, because legitimate folks, that's gonna be more than that. No more than three times a year? I don't, I don't know.
Um, yeah, we, we've talked about doing it a little bit longer, but we thought forty-five days was, we tried that out, but.
We could amend it easily, right, Slater, if we needed to come back and do something like you're saying?
Three times a year, it's good, but you know, if you're gonna do it, you know, January fifteenth, February fifth, and then you're, you're pressed, you know, this. I think, and we talked, I mean, we talked this week, I mean, we talked about thirty, we talked about ninety, we talked about forty-five, sixty was thrown in there and some hope that, you know, maybe this extra couple of weeks on there kind of deters some of that, if it doesn't, all it takes is seventy-two hours and this back on.
The only thing, three times a year, that concerns me is if we are just super booked with tournaments.
Right, we, and we typically don't get them over there at the RV park there, they've made an agreement, some of these tournament directors have made an agreement with the mallet, so they do use that area as well when they don't have events, but three times a year, it's already hard enough to see who's there and who's not. We only know the, the very few that are constantly there, so it would be almost impossible to know they were there three times a year. So I think, I think forty-five days would be sufficient for us.
Mayor, Council, are y'all ready for the second reading?
Aye.
Ordinance number one zero nine four, an ordinance amending the City of Level Inn, Texas Code of Ordinances nineteen ninety-seven, Chapter twelve, Parks and Lake Areas, by amending Article twelve point two one one entitled Camping, to amend and clarify what acts are prohibited or otherwise regulated in the city parks and lake areas, providing for enforcement, providing an effective date, providing a savings clause, providing a repealer, and providing for publication. Whereas it is generally recognized throughout the country that parks and other recreational areas should be safe for all users of such areas, and whereas the city council finds it in the best interest of the public to implement certain prohibitions and regulations to protect the health and safety of the citizens of Level Inn, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Level Inn, Texas. that Article twelve point two one one Camping slash RV Park. All RV spaces are available on a first come basis, but only one space is available for each RV. RV spaces are provided free of charge for up to three days. Reservations are not accepted. Saving of spaces is not accepted. Only one free stay per, and I'm just going to read as we had it thirty days. If y'all choose in your motion to change that, staff will certainly get that done. Water and electric hookups are provided free of charge. Only household pets overnighting in the RV are permitted. Owners are required to clean up after their pets and are responsible for damage from their pets. A free sewage dump station is provided on seat, on site for RV campers entering or leaving the park. Trash containers and dumpsters are provided for convenience. When space is available, RV campers may be permitted to stay up to an additional seven days for a maximum of ten days. To do so, they must apply for and receive a permit or before the third day and prepay a fee of twenty-five dollars for each additional day. No EV charging allowed in the RV park, no tent camping or sleeping in vehicles outside of the RV, no open campfires allowed. No clotheslines, freezers, refrigerators, fencing barriers or pallets, dog candles, pins or dog runs are allowed outside of the RV. No mats, rugs, et cetera, allowed on the grass. All water hoses and sewer lines must be free of leaks. And solicitation or signs for the sale of products and or services is prohibited.
Any questions on this? Ordinance. Amending rules for the RV park.
Uh, one thing I would remind you all of, th- these are in some sense not new. These are taken from the sign that's out there. When staff was doing the review, they realized that that was not an ordinance from this body. So this is really conforming what have always been the rules out there.
Are y'all all good with the forty-five days?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve ordinance ten ninety-four amending rules for the City of Loveland RV Park on a second reading. And amending. So they can only stay every forty-five days. Right?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? With that, we have none opposed. Motion carries. Item number five, I would be consider and take necessary action on a payment request from Ameresco in the amount of five hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-one cents for the water meter project pursuant to the contract approved between the city and Ameresco in October of twenty-four.
Mayor, members of council, this item is for you. As it stated is pay number four. This project's moving forward. I know there's some areas where we may have missed some sprinkler meters or things like this. Those were an oversight. They're going to be coming back to that. One of the big challenges that we have to manage through this is we have two blackout periods in the month and those blackout periods, because our city is divided into zones. And the blackout period is when that zone is up for meter reading. They will leave the zone that they're working in and go to the other zone. And then they'll come back. So sometimes when that happens, they may miss a meter or miss something. But we have staff going through there and making sure everything's fine, but if you know something we may have missed, please let us know so we can get with the company and get them taken care of, but we would ask for approval of this item.
I think they're doing a, a quick job in, in not making a big mess. I think they're doing a good job. I, I move that we approve payment application. Approve payment application number four from Ameresco in the amount of five hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-one cents.
Okay. The motion in a second. All in favor? With that and opposed motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number six, an update on the May twenty ninth, twenty twenty-four flatwind incident for Mr. Cole Kirkland. Cole, that anniversary is quickly creeping up on us, as hard as it is to imagine.
Crazy at the end of the year almost.
Very slow fast year.
Fast.
Sorry, you're going to see quite a bit of me tonight, so apologize for that.
Make yourself comfortable.
So what's going to take you through what the FEMA projects look like for the city of Loveland very specifically? So we'll just start at the top. I think on your memo, there was a screenshot of the applications that we have on there right now. Beginning with category E, the fire station project. We're still working, getting finalization from or final disposition from TML on the coverage roof acceptability. So we're still expecting that to be probably a five hundred thousand dollar project. It would be in totality, a seventy-five, twenty-five match from the city. So FEMA would potentially cover it once we prove that it's uninsured and that we were going to incur that cost directly. It would be a seventy-five, twenty-five percent match.
Let me interject something here on the roof. We received a letter from TML late Friday and we're appealing our first appeal. They are saying that our roof is not eligible. We're not going to cover it. And part of it is in twenty twenty-two, when we had a previous hailstorm, there was some damage there. They notified the city and the city failed to repair it. So my argument to them is, one, I want documentation that they notified the city. Two, I want to see the latest report that they had. And three, just say you take a big rectangle and one corner of that rectangle wasn't done correctly. Does that mean the entire rectangle is no longer eligible? So as we get into the financing of the wastewater plant and other financial options, if y'all remember from last week, the roof was in the financing piece. We pulled that out because this is probably going to be a long conversation. I, I do know after the storm, Cole got with a roofer who came in and did some repairs just to kind of get us through this. Fortunately, with the rain we've had, we haven't seen any leakage into the building. So hopefully they addressed some of those concerns, but we're still trying to work through everything and I think this is going to be a very, very long process.
We have no paperwork on the twenty-two.
I have.
That we're aware of.
I, I haven't worked, found it yet. One of the questions, I said, you know, it'd been nice whenever we do our rerates with them, if there had been an asterisk that says, hey, you know, what status we roof or we're not covering your roof, because that's the other thing. We've been paying for premiums.
Think your premium would go down. That's not covered.
But there was kind of a weird statement made that, well, we would cover your fire station if it caught on fire. But we wouldn't cover the roof. It's, it's kind of bizarre right now, but.
Was there any dollar figure associated with, with the prior? In this?
Twenty-two.
Not, not that I'm aware of, sir, and I'm, I'm trying to go backwards to figure that out. We've also pulled the permitting documents that when we did it, we're reaching out to the contractor that originally did the building. We've got a lot of homework to do. And it's going to be a long process, but we got notice late Friday and the tone of the letter was not very friendly.
How does the appeal work?
We, according to them, we just send them another letter and then they will take it under consideration if they want to move forward.
At what point do we get a roofing consultant?
I've already been working on that piece. Part of our appeal will be having all of that documentation and going in and getting some of that info, but also kind of asking that question. If it's just a small piece of that whole big thing that was damaged or wasn't repaired, why is a whole roof ineligible?
Like, do other communities do anything different besides TML? Because I'm pretty mad at them.
They're, they're not near the options in cities. I mean, I, I don't think I have any cities that are not with TML. We, we were talking today about different schools, school districts. We, again, the, the big boy in school districts is Tasby. They're there, but you also have PCAT teams, Pete, you know, there are three or four others. And I think it's made a real difference in, in, in them working to not find a reason to not cover something, but to, in many circumstances, find a reason to cover something because they are, they're in. We are seeing, um, we, we're, we're just seeing a new philosophy with TML throughout different cities. Collecting claims, accepting claims that are in litigation to defend and then pulling covers in middle. It's.
I just feel like my time on council just showed more negative encounters with TML. It was kind of like just a rubber stamp denial.
Well, this is really the big thing that they denied. I mean, the, the tower was the other thing because we never listed it. But everything else, they've been pretty responsive. All of our vehicles, they were very, very responsive. Our, our water office, they have been responsive.
It's the newest building we have.
I, I know, man. And but you know, if they send us a letter in twenty twenty-two says you need to repair this and we ignore it, or we go up and kind of subrepair it, that that was one comment too. It looked like someone put silicone caulk up there, which is not what you need to do. So we're going to work through this. And remember, when we're talking TML, it's a TML, the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool. It's not TML, the big company. It's, it's the risk pool. I think by the end of the day, we're going to get something. I don't, I don't.
Who they sent that to and what happened and what the letter said and all those kinds of things.
They identified the, the two folks that they sent it to and it's, it's just aggravating that we, we didn't do the responsive thing and, and, and take care of it. But we're working through that. We're kind of going backwards and it's going to take some time, but I think we'll get somewhere down the road as we, we go forward on it.
Sounds real strange to me in my, my limited experience with TML. They, they never did any of this stuff. It just paid off.
It's just a little different approach that, that we're seeing from them. And it's not a lot different than we see from traditional insurance companies that pay everything because it's cheaper than hiring lawyers and fighting. And then they realize they're paying so much, like, nope, we're going to fight everything. It's, it's all or nothing. You, you just, you see that up and down. I just think we're in a cycle right now.
Well, and they've also, as we all know, our state's been hammered over the last couple of years. And when TML IRP has got all these cities and it's just been everything from the Rio Grande Valley to to Dalhart and El Paso to Beaumont, just one catastrophic event after another. They're going to get a little bit more picky and if we didn't do our job of repairing something, it's easy for them to say we're not doing this. We've got to backtrack and say, okay, here's what we've done or here's what was done, but that's only X amount square footage of the total thing. So tell me where we're at in this whole thing.
But overnight, we had no water in the building.
No, ma'am.
That's a win. I'm going to take that as a win.
Cole's closet was the one that got the most water.
I've seen it rushing in there myself, so.
So I have a set of floaties on my desk just in case it gets too. So second project would be category A, which is debris removal. It's under peer review right now, so we've got all the documentation submitted. They've got one final questionnaire that I have to complete. That total project came out to seventy-five thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. With seventy-five percent match, we would be looking at a reimbursement of fifty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. Category, the third project would be category E, which is the city vehicles. We were able to apply for or submit an application for the deductibles for all of the, for the forty-eight vehicles that we submitted. So that was a twelve thousand dollar project with a seventy-five percent match. We would have nine thousand dollars returned. That one's obligated as well, meaning that we were waiting for that last document we signed last council meeting. So that's all been submitted and so we should be seeing that pretty soon. Fourth project, which is category F, utilities, which is the communication tower. The initial repair costs, which is two-track system, so it's the repairs due to the storm and codes and standards upgrades. So the lighting system that needs to be repaired, any of the guy wires that need to be replaced. We're looking at ninety-nine, they approved the entire invoice, which was ninety-nine thousand nine hundred, seventy-five percent match would be seventy-four thousand nine twenty-five. There's still mitigation project up to the total amount of the repair cost, so potentially another ninety-nine thousand nine hundred.
Do you know how that decision would be made?
Mitigation. So that would go, same process. It would go, it's specialized track for somebody who understands tower service. But it would be the same thing. It'll go under CRC review, which is the overarching regulatory group that does FEMA applications and then it will go under a peer review for a final review and then that would be obligated, so.
An extra month, an extra six months?
Um, no, I think once, because the project's already in motion, they're, they will approve as we go forward. We just have to validate that the, the tower that we're building mitigates hazards that the other one sustained. And so we could match up to the same, and I think the mitigation project is eighty-twenty match, so that would be seventy-nine thousand nine twenty, which would bring the total for, potential total for FEMA reimbursement for the tower project of two one hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars. The, we're going back through the tower project, so there was some ARPA funding that was associated with that project. So the tower project is, or what we applied for with FEMA is directly for the structure of the tower. We weren't allowed to apply for, we've learned now, we weren't, they had to exclude the equipment on the tower and the building at the base. So originally we had quoted for the total project that was presented, a forty thousand dollar concrete building for the, where the communication equipment would be housed. With intention of reducing budgets and, and cost savings, we have another option that met with our vendor through and discussed pretty heavily was they do shipping containers now. So they can, or slab, bolt them down and then it's all self-contained and insulated, which is about a quarter of the cost of the concrete building, but just as resilient. They're very, very resilient and safe and secure. And we can get those in Lubbock rather than having to order those from wherever we can find them. So maybe an option that would be about ten thousand dollars option versus the forty to fifty thousand dollar option of hauling in a concrete building. Project number five, which is another utility project that goes back to the insurance coverage, was the pump station and wastewater treatment impact. Insurance covered all of the damages with the, other than the thousand dollar deductible for the building. So there was no actual, we just, the project's still on there, but it's just a zero, just zeroed out because insurance covered it. Sixth project with category E was the water department building. Total project with contents and structure roof and interior was two hundred and eighteen thousand seven eighty-one and eighteen cents. Insurance covered one hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety cents, leaving a difference, uninsured difference of seven, seventy-six thousand two hundred and sixty-three. So with the FEMA seventy-five, twenty-five match, we're going to be looking at a seventy, fifty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty-six cents to return from that. Seventh project, which was the emergency protective measures, which included any of the expenditures that we had initially to respond in the response era. It was going to be a lot of the overtime for public safety and public works. And then regular staff, all of that was submitted and approved and that one's already obligated. Total on that project was twenty-one thousand ninety dollars with seventy-five percent match. It's returning fifteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. Correction, eight hundred and seventeen dollars. And then the final project, which was category B, which was the donated resources, the volunteer tracking hours for the debris project. That will cover all of our in-kind match that we had for all of our projects and that totaled estimated to about forty thousand five, forty thousand five dollars and ninety-six cents.
Well, you have any idea to know, it's the first time we've ever done this, but when these funds might start to roll in?
It should be pretty quick. All of the obligated, which there was five of the eight that are already obligated, so those should start rolling in anytime. They were just having to process that terms and conditions document we submitted. So it should be pretty quick.
You know, when we started this, we didn't know if we would get anything.
Yeah, absolutely.
So it's been a lot of work and a lot of tracking.
Yeah. Been very cumbersome, absolutely.
But it sounds like it's going to be worth it.
So we're going to be well within the six-figure mark on our returns for in-kind match and projects being sent back, so.
Doesn't make us whole, I'm sure. Thankful.
If you don't have any questions on this FEMA side for the city, we can move into the individual assistance update. So originally when I had presented, I don't remember, was it in August, I think, last year, we talked about FEMA assistance. We were at about eight and a half million dollars is what FEMA has pushed back. The latest update now, is we're sitting about fourteen million dollars is what FEMA has put back on the private side or commercial and individual side for housing repairs, housing assistance, rentals and then house repair. And then there's about fifteen hundred applications, fifteen seventy-seven and fifteen forty-nine were validated. So that was a pretty decent return. We felt like that was a, a good coverage for those that were impacted. On long-term recovery, so it's going to be our local group, Love Loveland. Um, on long-term recovery. So it's going to be our local group, Love Level and stepped up as our fiscal agent for disaster response. They've done a tremendous job. They didn't sign up for the long-term recovery, but they were so willing to take it after we started into that. So they took the fiscal agent role as donated resource or donated funds. They received fif- fifty-five thousand five hundred dollars from locals, um, for to aid on the local side. Um, right now they've got sixteen thousand left. They're waiting towards the anniversary to see what other needs there were. Um, they received sixty-two applications, thirty-four were approved. Um, there was twenty-eight denied and ninety-five percent of the denials where there was no response from the people that applied. They needed, you know, documentation from FEMA or something, and they just never provided it. Um, and so it goes under the denied category, not necessarily that they weren't willing to help them. They just didn't have any response. Um, and then also that's not included in the fifty-five thousand was fourteen thousand from Hockley County Endowment. Um, they had referred, uh, seven of the most needy applications from the Long-Term Recovery Committee. Five of those accepted it. So the fourteen thousand was split amongst those five households. So they each got about twenty-eight hundred dollars from, uh, Hockley County Endowment as well. And that is the update I have for the store.
Thank you. Have we, we haven't burned our debris, debris pile.
We, we were waiting for what we're, what we're getting, which was rain. Where everything's been, the debris project's been submitted, um, because it's in final disposition. It's going to be buried, the ashes of the, the debris are going to be buried where they are. So it's in its final disposition. Um, so we were able to submit that project. So we're not in, we're not in a big rush for that.
That they dried out, too.
Yeah, we'll have a, we'll have a better burn.
Cooperate, we need.
Yeah, it's a. I've burned a lot of things. I've never burned forty thousand cubic yards of debris, so.
But we'll heavily communicate that.
Absolutely. So we'll have a, it'll be, uh, cooperation, uh, for staging that with Smire Volunteer Fire Department as well as Levelan, um, and as well as the county, so that we can make sure we have our fire breaks are in place and everything. So that'll be a whole big project. So.
Can't imagine. It'll be a, no, I'm not going to say fun. It might be a fun one.
I don't know that I have that many marshmallows. Yeah, yeah, that's, that'll be.
Thank you, Cole.
Fair, before you leave this item. I, I want to just, and I know we've said it many times, but Cole, thank you. Countless, countless hours and due diligence that you've done to take care of our community. Uh, I don't think we can really understand everything that you've done. Many hours, the late chasing things down. We got through this event because of your leadership.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that very much.
It's wholeheartedly meant. You kind of had to see it to, to understand it. I had to. So it's crazy that we're coming up on a year and it's, um, it's amazing what, where we are from there. And we appreciate you so much.
Thank you very much.
For you.
And we hope we don't have to work that hard in the future.
You and me both. You and me both.
This one needs to get behind you for a little while. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I am a believer in the IV infusions, though that, that changed my life. So.
Okay. Well, I hope we never have to do it again, but if we do, it's coming. Okay. Good to know. In the event of an emergency, that's what I'll bring. With the trained person. Thank you, Cole. Anything else for Cole?
He's the next item.
Oh, that's you. No, sorry.
The next, I think, seven or mine.
Okay. Item number seven is to consider and take necessary action to authorize the city manager to sign and enter into a master service agreement with Lone Star Education and a Research Network.
So this project is, uh, has been on the table for the better part of three years. Um, so Learn Network is, was designed, um, for institutes of higher education and healthcare research centers um, to provide very high quality, very high speed, uh, internet access. Um, they have since opened that up. Uh, it was a really big deal on the I thirty-five corridor. Usually they don't share the wealth on the I thirty-five corridor, but nonetheless, they've shared it up this way to make it accessible for us. Um, so our closest connection would be for Lubbock. But it's what South Plains College uses now. They have a ten gig connection out of the college and they, they speak very, very highly of it, very, very, the staff and the cooperation and the connection is all top notch. So the project was initially, to give you an overview, was, um, as we go through each one of these agreements, um, is the learn connection is in Lubbock at the citizens' tower. Uh, we are going to connect, pay for the connection there, um, and then run fiber down South Plains Telephone Cooperative's fiber access. So we'll rent fiber there. Um, and then jump onto South Plains College Fiber at their junction on, uh, fifteen eighty-five and terminate at South Plains College Campus. Then we will shoot wirelessly from South Plains College Campus to two different buildings to create a level of wireless redundancy for ourselves. Um, so we'll probably go to the fire station directly and then to the law enforcement center. Um, just because the tower's there, it's very easy to make that, that shot. Um, but we're looking for an upgrade, um, compared to what our current network connection is, is fifty meg. And this day and age is, you can run faster than that. So, uh, we're looking to go from fifty meg to five hundred meg connection and for less money. So, um, that's the, that's the better part of the, this pie that we're trying to, to eat is that it's going to cost us less money. So that ultimately we have savings for the tax base. So. But this, it's the master service agreement. They're a cooperative. So you have to join their club to be a part of their, um, to be able to take advantage. And so that, that's what the master service agreement is, is just to make city of level and members of the Learn Network.
How long do you think it would take to implement the project?
So there's going to be a lot of build time. Once we get all of this in place, um, the infrastructure is readily available. There's not any big, big significant piece there. Three, four months. So.
And it's summer, so maybe that's better.
Yes, I think so.
For us, but I just, I, I know y'all have worked on this for a long time. I think it's a, it's a huge win for law enforcement and for city staff who our internet is, is a problem and it's slow. Plus removing the city from the tube of internet, the way it's been described to me, makes more room for our citizen. That opens it up to.
Yeah, we, the city demand would no longer compete with local customers.
Plus it's dramatically cheaper.
And, um, so we're, we've agreed to the, or tentatively agreed to the five hundred meg connection. Um, they're building it at a one gig connection. So it would just be a phone call if we decided we wanted to jump up to the one gig. It's simply a phone call on their side. We won't have to change anything on ours. So.
The reliability of it will be just.
I know the colleges had great success with it.
Absolutely. And then, um, drastically cheaper alternative with the same or better, uh, connectivity than fiber. Uh, fiber right now is about a million and a half per mile in urban setting. Um, and we can do, we can build the entire project, uh, with all city facilities included for less than a hundred. So.
Yeah. Thirty-nine hundred and fifty-four dollars a month right now compared to fourteen hundred dollars a month. Or ten times better.
This allows to get internet out to.
Landfield. Yeah, we're gonna, the.
It'll go right by there.
Well, so we're going to have to shoot it from here because it'll have to be part of the city network before it goes back there. But we're going to go from the L E C Tower, the P D Tower back out there. So.
That's doable?
Absolutely.
So you can run a credit card out there.
Absolutely. Cause there's already a tower site. There's already a tower structure at the landfill. So be very easy to set that up.
I think it's a win-win.
I move to approve and authorize the city manager to complete and sign the master service agreement with Lone Star and Research Network. The motion in a second. All in favor? An opposed motion carries. Item number eight is to consider and take necessary action to author a city manager to sign and enter into a network service agreement. Lone Star Education and Research Network.
Um, so this is the, ultimately the data plan we're agreeing to. Um, it is a five-year term. So once we sign it, we'll be a part of this for the next five years. The port we're connecting to is ultimately ten gig. That's as big as we could get with the connection that we're getting. Um, that will be far beyond anything we would ever ever need. I mean, the college does that with all their video technology and they run ten gigs. So, um, that is far beyond anything we would ever, ever need. One gig would just probably light our hair on fire. So I think five hundred is going to be a pretty good, pretty good step.
But I, I move to approve and authorize the city manager to sign and enter into the network services agreement with Lone Star Education and Research Network.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Cole. Item number nine is to consider and take necessary action to authorize the city manager to sign and enter into an internet agreement with South Plains Telephone Cooperative, D B A Horizon Communication.
Um, so this is just the partnership there. That's how, um, South Plains College gets their internet access. They have same agreement with South Plains Telephone to use their fiber to get from Lubbock to Lublin.
Mayor, I move the city council authorized city manager to sign and enter into an interlocal agreement with South Plains College for use of the label fiber optic lines and facility infrastructure to support of learning.
Run nine, Bill.
I'm sorry.
I was like, hey, what? Yep. Approve and authorize city manager to complete and sign the internet service agreement. Number nine?
Number nine?
Yes.
I've got it right here. I moved it. We, we approve and authorize the city manager to complete and sign the internet service agreement with S P T C Doing Businesses Horizon Communication.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Item number ten is to consider and take necessary action to authorize the city manager to sign and enter into interlocal agreement with South Plains College for use of available fiber optic lines and facility infrastructure in support of Learn Network Connection.
So I really have to, um, commend South Plains College because they've been a tremendous partner in making this happen. They have facilitated this discussion for the last three years. I'm sure they're tired of this horse being beat on. But, um, and when they drafted the agreement, it was very clear from the beginning that there was not going to be any service fees for any, for occupying their fiber or, um, any equipment we house there or using the tower on their facility. So they were just a tremendous partner. They say they absolutely value the city of Lovelands partnership and so many programs and wanted to make sure that they could repay. So they were glad to be of service to the city of Loveland. So I just wanted to make sure.
They didn't have to let us do any.
Absolutely. And so much less free of charge. We were, explained to them, we were very willing to, um, to pay our fair dues, but they were adamant about there not being a fee for this.
Yes, sir. You can move on, Bill.
Instead, I move you take action to authorize the city manager to sign and enter into an interlocal agreement with South Plains College. Uh, for use of available fiber optic lines and facility, uh, infrastructure in support of Learn Network Connection.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Item number eleven is to consider and take necessary action to approve the Alliance for Community Solutions Based Access Control and Panic Button Project.
So due to sensitivity from the project, um, this was withheld from packets just because um, it's got some security infrastructure that identified places and locations, which is not something everybody liked. Which, once you see it, it makes a little more sense why I wrote the manual that I wear that I do.
I can read this now.
So I printed this in, um, a font, so that way it was a little more, uh, a little easier to read for everybody under the age of twelve. So, let's see. Um, so to start off into it, um, Alliance for Community Solutions is who does, uh, the I info project. So all the mass notifications, all the text alerts and everything, uh, as well as our I D cards and credentialing system. Um, so they are kind of the industry standard. There's not, so far I've not found another access control group that does situation-based access control. So, um, regardless of your agency, if city hall goes into panic mode, somebody presses the panic button for distress, um, puts the building into lockdown so that you don't add more people, more victims potentially to a very dangerous situation. Um, but anybody, anybody that's a peace officer, regardless of their agency, can then swipe their card and gain access to the building. Or anybody that we choose to add. Um, it's a system we already have in place for all the I D cards for the entire county public safety community. But that's the, that's the change is that it's, it ties in your panic system where it goes directly over to public safety radios. So it's not a call, the panic button didn't go to a call center and then the call center called dispatch, and then the dispatcher sent an officer. The officers hear verbatim what the situation is. There's, you know, law enforcement requested at the front desk at city hall or municipal court or the judges' chambers or any of those things. And so, um, integrating all of those together streamlines and protects to the best of our ability. Um, this project is, has come in significantly higher than we had anticipated. A lot of that being because of the current status of the markets, but we can jump through. We'll go ahead and start with the, uh, single page, the smaller page, which is your panic button project. Kind of gives you a breakdown. So when you, when we dive into projects with A C S, we know every single thing. It's one hundred percent transparency on the financial side because we were part of their membership. They are a nonprofit, and so they have to be transparent with all of their costs and um, they're only allowed to have a ten percent profit margin at the, at the end of the day. And so any of the money that is left over, we can either apply back to other areas that we didn't cover. Or we can go, or we can just have that money sent back to us. But this would put a panic button at all of our critical areas, especially at city hall. Um, there's a lot more vulnerable uh, positions in city hall than there are, per se, the police department, because a lot of those folks have their own panic button that they carry around. So this is going to be more focused on, um, city hall and then the communications center, for whatever reason, if the current system were to fail, dispatch could then press a panic button to let the officers know that there's something going on in the comm center, which is not something we have currently. And they either have to get to a radio or leave the building. There's no other way to let them know. So, um, police department, there's not a whole lot there, other than there's going to be two buttons at the front desk for Ms. Donna and then, um, the sheriff's office side. If they want one, they can add on to this project. Um, the fire department, there's not really a cost, a, a need for one there, um, other than just a couple of common areas. If something were to happen that in, you know, the chief's office or the front area or, um, we can facilitate that very easily. Um, and this is, and this project can be scaled. Both of these projects can be scaled both directions. Um, this is not directly for a, or a part of the ARPA funds or allocation. Um, we had in capital, uh, we had applied or had put in twenty thousand for the capital project. Um, and then I was a recipient of an Oxy grant, um, because to purchase the base unit, which is another project we're working on, which is to tie in the H two S monitoring SCADA system for the oil wells that are in residential areas. So rather than Oxy being the only one alerted that there's a high, high alarm, they would go directly to that local fire department and let them know, hey, there's also high, high H two S presence at this. So they're, rather than the alarm going to Oxy, the Oxy driving out there verifying it and then calling somebody, we're streamlining that process. There's, I mean, there's up to an hour, hour and a half. Um, and with H two S, high concentration, A two, H two S, that's it's nearly a body recovery guaranteed at that point. So, um, the ten thousand dollar grant was, was to buy the, purchase the base unit, which will also serve as the base unit that will control the access. So we'd initially budgeted for thirty thousand for the project, came in at thirty-six, seven, ninety-nine, fifty-two. Um, a lot of that being because of the twenty percent inflation we're seeing right now. But with that project, I know South Plains College is very interested in the panic button access. So we would, uh, ultimately be able to allow them on to our base unit with a service agreement, just like we've just approved for them. Sundown I S D, Ropesville I S D, a lot of the school and Anton I S D, or VALL spoke that they would be very interested in, in becoming a part of that as well. And it would function the same for them. So they need law enforcement regardless of agency, as long as they were a peace officer, could swipe their card and get in the building. It, once it's in threat mode, any other time they would not be allowed to.
Okay.
So, um, that's the, that was one of the criteria for it, was that it had to be in threat mode, um, for that to occur. So. We can jump into the access control piece. Um, so predominantly this A C S does a lot of work down in San Antonio area. So that's where they bid or got quotes to build this, to build this quote. They got quotes from vendors for cabling down in that area. Um, it's a bit of a drive from San Antonio to Levelan, um, to do cabling. So we've actually got some cost savings already in that project. We've got a, of the Tate Bartlett. I've spoke to him. He did some of the access or the cabling for the fire station when we built that several years ago. It's J Bar Cabling out of Lubbock. And, um, so he's taken about At Lubbock. And um so he's taken about nearly twenty thousand dollars off that line at the bottom line, just by him doing the cabling here rather than using their group. So total project for the access control. Um and this includes a ten percent contingency, which is one, uh one hundred and fifty thousand, nine oh two forty one. Uh minus the twenty that we, with the change of the cabling vendor would put us at the one thirty nine oh two mark. I know originally we had uh bid or quoted the project and we had twenty eight doors. We dropped eight of them, but when we did the walk through and um the actual project, uh we added, we dropped five and then added five. We dropped eight and added five. So there wasn't as much of a drop in the project cost. It was originally one thirty three, one hundred and thirty three thousand. We're going to be pretty close to that on this side of it. But we're not, I don't believe we're going to have to change any door structures. There's going to be a lot of door hardware that changes to make it compatible with the system. But there's, the thing is that there's not another access control group that has this level of thorough, thoroughness and research. Um we take right at eleven hundred pictures when we did our walkthroughs. We know the, the length and the width of every single hinge. We know the mechanism on every single door. We're going to electrify. Um we know the feet of cable. We know inside the outside, the width of the door, the height of the door. And so
They get to us.
Do what?
I mean, can they get to us?
So we would probably be in the August, September timeframe, by the time we got all of the materials in. They will build a lot of the kits um there and ship them to us so that they're not having to build things on site. Just saves us some money on that end. And then a lot of the work that can be done in maintenance of it um could be done locally. That would, that would fall under my purview. So um the one thing about the panic button and the electronic system is it's all monitored. So um panic buttons that we have now, it's the same in a lot of areas, is the panic button battery goes dead and we have no idea. And so they press the button and nothing happens because the battery's been dead for six months and no one knew. Um I will get a status of every single device um several times a week. It will come through in an email and it'll let me know this battery's low in this area.
Like the siren.
Just this, like the siren system. Um and so I will know that Diana's panic button under her desk, the battery needs to be changed, rather than something happening in her, in her button not work. And I think that's worth its weight in gold, just having that monitoring of the system. And so there will be, there's a recurring cost with the access projects, about eight thousand dollars a year. Because there's so many devices and so many um swipes and hinges and door hardware. All of that is monitored. Um and checked, this is, it pings back to the repeater. Um the other system, other part of the system is that it's radio controlled. It's not internet based. So even if we lost internet, our access control would function as normal. Um the panic button is all radio controlled, so um and it's all on battery backup. So even if the power went out, somebody cut the power to the building, our access control and our panic system would function. So a lot of the access control and the panic systems you see now are IP-based and internet dependent. And so um they're not nearly as resilient, uh but they're also a lot cheaper. So.
This is one of those projects you really, really hope you never have to use, but if you don't have it, then what?
Absolutely.
I mean, it's required in school districts now, so.
And it's, it's so hard to read these numbers. What is our grand total?
So grand total between both projects, um make it down to it. Is like one.
Be small with this little bitty.
You're old. Hey, speak real old.
Uh the grand total is one eighty four, thirty of that is budgeted. Um and then I believe we had done in the ARPA funding, they had a city manager, I believe, had allotted like one fifty total, but that was to include a generator project. I've reached out to two vendors for the generator project to get numbers on that, and I have not received numbers back yet.
One eighty four and how much was budgeted?
Thirty.
Thirty and then a hundred and fifty.
For the access. Yeah.
Monus.
Yes, ma'am.
You terrified of this generator numbers?
No.
No, you don't think that's going to be bad? I don't want it.
It's going to be, depending on, I think the original plan was to move the fire station generator here. But to, I believe, I think the issue is that why I've not heard back is there's going to have to be some engineering that occurs. Is my assumption at this point, um because the system, the transfer switches that were designed for the fire station um were designed at two hundred amps per transfer switch. Um but it's a right at four hundred and fifty amp system. And so there's not enough, I guess, infrastructure, the infrastructure's not heavy enough to handle the whole hundred and forty. Um and so I think they're having to figure out how they're going to make that work. Um but I know that they bought the two hundred and fifty KVA uh generator at the Lee Street Tower. I think it was in the eighty thousand range, something like that. So but that's setting it on a pad and it hooks up to a building that there's not any wires to run really any length. Um that's drastically different for a building like this or building like fire station. So um as soon as I have that, I will get it to James. We'll have that discussion.
Any more questions for Cole one? Panic button project?
I think that's something we have to do.
I love that the batteries are monitored constantly. That's important.
Yes, absolutely. I know that's um not to, I guess divulge too much, but there would be an opportunity for a community project as well. So um this panic button project um going into the county side. Um that's one thing we don't know is if City Hall goes into lockdown, then the courthouse would be. And then we're looking at the same project on the courthouse side. If courthouse goes into lockdown, City Hall needs to be made aware of that. And that ties directly into the iInfo system. So all the notifications would come through. So if courthouse goes into lockdown, all those businesses around the square then get notified to go ahead and secure their businesses. And so it's very, very widespread uh public safety's perspective.
Moving with free project, approved a project and authorized city manager to move forward with the inflammation, implementation plan of a situation-based access control and panic button project through Alliance for Community Solutions.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Next item is number twelve.
No, you are, as long as they just don't get to show it up. Do I need them back?
Okay, we've got. Next item is to consider and take necessary action on a board appointment for the Lublin Economic Development Corporation, LADC board. Thank you, Cole. Hi, Justin.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. We have a vacant board seat following uh Mr. Blair's resignation, March fifth. He was very transparent in his transition from his retirement from SBC. So definitely want to uh thank him for his dedication of years of service to the LADC, played a pivotal role on a lot of meaningful projects. So just really want to thank Mr. Blair for his leadership and vision for us. We have been uh working diligently to find um a member to fill the vacant seat. We have reached out to Patrick Secora. He expressed interest in joining the LADC, had very productive uh meetings with him and he decided that he'd be willing. My recommendation would be, Mr. Blair's term is set to expire June twenty twenty five. He fill the remainder of that term and the council would appoint him for a new full term as well.
I think it's a home run.
I think that'll be a great addition to that board.
Yeah. Thank Mr. Blair for, for his service, absolutely. But I'm excited for what Mr. Secora can bring to the table and um very inspiring guy.
That any discussion, I, I move we appoint Pat, Patrick Secora to the LADC board of directors to fill the vac- vacancy for the next full term.
Okay. Motion in a second, all in favor? With that, motion carries. Item number thirteen is discussion about financial options for the wastewater treatment plant project. Thank you, Justin. Y'all turn the air on.
Yeah.
I'm about sweater. Yes, I feel it. Maybe Cole.
Mayor, members of council, I know we um went over this item um last week. Uh prior to Mr. Hughes from Hilltop Securities, just kind of wanted to go back through this again in case there were any questions uh from that time. Uh Mr. Powell, I think I laid in front of you a copy of the presentation. And there's also a black book from uh Hilltop Securities that laid out uh various uh financing options. I'm, I'm not going to go on this page by page. I'm more going to kind of jump to the get my pages to turn. If, when we look at um our, our funding mechanisms and the availability, this spreadsheet was given to the council in September of twenty twenty two. At that time, there was approximately forty seven hundred uh accounts. Uh September of twenty twenty four, there's approximately fifty two hundred accounts that we would uh be looking at um for a wastewater fee. And if you look at this uh document as well, it shows um projected uh the fund balance that's within the wastewater improvement fund. This is something that as we go into this year's budget, uh we're going to try our best to try to clarify this. Um what if I understood everything I've looked at in conversations with uh our finance department, um our uh wastewater improvement fund and our reserve fund are pretty much the same funds. Uh ideally, uh especially with an enterprise fund, wastewater fund, you would like to have thirty percent of normal operating in a dedicated reserve fund. And uh where the wastewater improvement fund goes all into one area, um you take basically profits excess revenue that you generate in the year, move that into a reserve fund. So you can pay for future challenges. Um the city has uh adopted um a wastewater improvement fee of uh twenty one dollars and sixty two cents. That fee, all of that is being dedicated to uh the repayment of the bond from twenty twenty two. So um and we're also utilizing uh anticipated revenue from the cell of eth- uh effluent water to the ethanol plant. So when we, we looked at various financing things, the city is paying one point five, really almost one point six per year uh in principal and interest for the twenty twenty two uh bond issuance of nineteen and a half million dollars towards this project. We make payments in February and August uh for this um bond program. Our current status of where we're at, again, uh the bids were open on March thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Our lowest bid was twenty six million, two hundred and sixty five thousand. We have a construction contingency of five percent of one million, three hundred and thirteen thousand. Uh which that number makes me extremely nervous because if you read everything out there, um costs are only going up. We're in very uncertain times right now, more so than ever. Um so we'll need to watch that uh very carefully. The city has already uh paid about two million dollars for engineering design and bidding services. Uh the engineering construction services, as you see on here, uh was nine sixty five. If, if I did my math correctly and from uh Park Hill, uh they agreed to reduce that by two hundred and thirty, two thousand. So that number's now seven thirty three. Um which brings down our total project cost to um roughly thirty million, six hundred. Approximately thirty million, six hundred thousand. So where we find ourselves is we're still needing about seven uh million dollars to fund this project as it stands today. And if you recall last week, um when Hilltop Securities um presented options for us to consider and different things to look at. Uh and he gave that spreadsheet. We had uh not only the wastewater treatment plan of about six point seven. Um and he's gone back to, to look at that at seven million. But we also had uh eight hundred thousand or, excuse me, a million dollars in there for the SCADA system. From conversations with council on that, I think the direction was to see if we could fund this internally. Uh we looked very closely at our water and, and wastewater uh system improvement fees. Uh I feel very confident that we can fund these items out of those two funds and take care of this internally. So we wouldn't need that item on there uh in those uh bond projection sheets. Um we may have to borrow from the wastewater fund to fund the water side. But that's easily an internal accounting of, of paying that back. I feel very confident on that. We also um asked about uh removing um the fire department roof, uh the concern um that the life of the bond would be probably longer than the life of the roof. Uh we pulled that out for our earlier discussion tonight. That one's going to be a, a longer discussion. When we get whatever that resolution is, we'll step back then and figure out what options uh we need to move forward with on that. Also, within that spreadsheet was about um six million dollars for uh public facilities. Uh we are preparing uh an RFP right now for an animal uh services facility. We have reduced that down to about four million dollars. And then the final thing that um Hilltop Securities, Jason uh presented and I've asked him to look at this as well. Is considering a tax levy for the first three years of this project that allows us two years for construction and then one year of operating. So it'll put some of the burden of this on our debt service side uh regarding uh uh property taxes. Uh so he's running those numbers to uh decide give us an option to look at as well as how we move forward with that. So the end of the day, um we still need about seven million dollars uh that we've got to look at and we're looking at different ways on how we can finance this. I really don't want to have to adjust uh or raise the wastewater improvement fee anymore than we already have. But we might have to adjust that fee, raise it to, to cover some of this new debt. Um if the council awards the bid tonight, um it gives us the opportunity to sit down with a contractor to see if we can find some additional areas for cost savings. Uh I'm not an expert in this, but uh I've looked at this bid and I see very few places that we can really cut some things or, and I don't want to put us in a position to where down the road, we're paying three times the cost because we try and save money today. So we're we're looking at that very carefully. Um as I've stated to council and as y'all have uh seen in the paper, uh this does affect everything that we're doing as a city. Uh we've got our twenty twenty three master plan, infrastructure master plan that we've got to get busy on. But having to make these adjustments for this plant is going to delay that. There are other things. We've heard these projects in here, uh that Cole presented. Uh we're looking very closely of where we can move dollars uh to take care of those projects as well. It's causing us uh as a staff to, and, and we do this with every project. We look at them carefully, but we're looking at this even more closely. And um I will tell you, um it concerns the employees. Um I've already had some employees ask me if, if they're going to lose raises. It concerns the employees. Um, I've already had some employees ask me if if they're going to lose raises uh for the next so many years. Uh, I'm doing everything I can to. Avoid that issue if if we possibly can. We have to take care of our employees. I know the council knows that and I appreciate everything the council does to take care of us here, but. It's going to be very, very tight for a while. Um, and there will be pressure. Um. As property tax comes around, you've seen uh. Um appraisal letters came out today that showed values and a lot of people. Uh, their values went up uh just because values went up. They equate that that their taxes are going up and uh. But that's not necessarily the case, but uh there will be pressure from from the community that. Uh, if our overall values are up, they're going to expect their tax rate to drop significantly. Um, we'll do everything we can to be physically responsible, but we've also. Uh, have uh certain responsibilities to our community in providing services that everybody expects. So it's it's going to be a. Um, a delicate balance as we move forward, as we look at everything that we know needs to be accomplished. But also looking at how uh we afford these things, so.
Mr. Fisher, in terms of. Terms of the seven million dollars that you're talking about. You had to put you on the spot. If you had a recommendation tonight, what would you recommend that we do?
My recommendation would be uh once I finalize and and see what the um. Uh. Financial advisor would be to do the tax levy for three years to soften the burden. Um. And to move forward uh with the project as it is.
That would, what that would generate.
I I do not know those numbers yet, but I do know about one penny of property taxes and last year's budget was about sixty five thousand dollars. So, um. It it's going to be tight. We're going to have to look at doing the levy. We're going to have to look at probably. Uh, raising the wastewater improvement fund fee additionally. Um. But ideally, um, and this kind of steps into the next item, but um we have no choice. We have to move forward with this plant. And right now it's it's a seven million dollar adjustment. I'm hoping we can keep it at that number. I'm hoping that as we move forward through this project and through. Supply changes because they're starting to say that's fixing to to come next. That um we can stay within the five percent contingency. It is going to be a tough sled. Of keeping this project within numbers, uh keeping this project on time and moving forward. Because even some of the things we may have projected in bids, it may get affected by. Just what's going on in the economy. Some people are going to blame the economy, even though it may not have anything to do with it. They're just going to. Use that as a reason why things aren't going to happen, so. It's going to be difficult, but I my recommendation on the next item is that we move forward with this. And then. Um, we big, we begin discussions with our financial advisor about issuing certificates of obligation. For additional seven million dollars. And. At the time, we start trying to find every creative. Option viable, physically responsible option to how do we pay those without burdening. Um, taxpayers.
Well, I sure haven't over the last twenty five days of really digging into this, haven't had one person tell me in six months this is going to be cheaper. And that we should wait. Um, it's not anything I like. I would sure love to have some breathing room to go, oh, hang on, let's pump the brakes. But sadly, I don't think we have it. And Mr. Fisher pointed to it, and I want to say it and be big and bold and say it. We're not going to build this. Facility and take on more debt on the backs of our employees. I'm not going to support that and I'm not going to vote on that, that they don't get raises for the next three, four years because of this wastewater treatment plant. This isn't their fault. And and we have to support them and we have to continue supporting them as we move forward and taking care of them. Or who's going to run the plant? Who's going to? Help me when I need, when I need help. That's that's not a plan I I want to support. We're going to have to dig.
Your lead.
Figure it out.
Right.
Yeah, and I don't want that fear circulating and rumors are poison and we'd just like to stop that right now.
We're a pro employee city. We're a pro employee council. We we do appreciate it.
So I I mean, I won't tell you that I have the plan right here under my thumb how we're going to do that, but. We will, we'll work hard at it and um and do our best and we will not build it on the backs of no raises. That's not sustainable.
I appreciate that, Mayor. And I know our our employees appreciate this. This is. Um, since the thirteenth, when this has come out, um, this has been a. Interesting journey of trying to explore everything that we we possibly can and uh. We're going to keep digging. We're going to keep trying to figure out um. The best way to move this forward, but again, I can't say this enough, you know, yeah. Again, this is the next item. Because I've had some people ask me, why why don't we just start over? We could reject them. I mean, council has that full option, but I'm going to tell you, I think that would be the worst thing we could do. Because we're probably looking at late July, August before we get bids in. Who's to say the bid's going to be any cheaper? I don't think that they will. Um.
How much longer can we get out of the current system?
Well, our current plan is forty one years old. And I think when this was presented to the council back in twenty two, we were on borrowed time at that time, and we're still there. Um, and.
Well, it's a good question. We got.
We don't have the luxury of time.
I was told with this plant that when I can smell it, it means it's not working correctly. And I'm going to be honest, where my house is, I smell it six out of seven days out of the week. And it's worth, that's worrisome. I'm directly downwind of it and that's okay. But I was told that years ago and the reality is it's it's more and more every week.
And and this wastewater plant, this construction wastewater plant is positive. This is something to celebrate. In our community because we're growing, we're 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 trying to improve our facilities. The 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 thing that's got us. On our on our laurels is because it's come in so far overbid, but I still want to celebrate that we are moving forward, that we are. Improving our city and our infrastructure and and looking forward to the next hundred years. You know, our city is 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 a hundred years old and we have done some great things in this city. And I I don't want this to be such a black eye because it has come in under, I mean, overbid or over. What we expected. I want us to be able to celebrate that we we're advancing our community.
And opportunities once it is built, absolutely. They'll more affluent water to whomever, to maybe more to the ethanol plant, maybe. Somehow make a connection to the oil field um or or someone we're not even thinking of.
And just continue to put these Band-Aids on and expect the thing to heal and go away.
Well, we've. We have tackled this head on from day one. We could have easily. Dodged and lit and hid, but I appreciate the council. I appreciate uh the media of telling the story as well because uh we. We could have gotten beat up over this.
Just trying to be factual.
And and we're just, here it is. Here's where we're at. Here's where we're going. And I think this new plant's going to help us continue to grow, continue uh. On our goal to be the preferred city in the South Plains. It's going to take some work. But I know we have the staff of employees that are willing to do that, willing to do the hard work. We're just, again, um. Trying to give you all all the information that we can, let you look at it, and as you have questions. To step back and do our best to answer them uh the best that we can, but the. The best news that I found in this is that we can pull out the SCADA system. We're working on the proposal to get that going forward. Um, make that happen with this bond issuance. Um. We're also looking at getting money to build a new animal uh services facility, which is desperately needed. And I know some people were arguing, why don't we put that off? We can't. That facility was damaged during the winter storm or during the windstorm. Um, had some walls that were kind of cattywampus that we fixed, but. It it's served its purpose. We have to replace that facility. And we have to have a facility that's safe for our employees, safe for our volunteers and uh safe for the community members come to it, so. Uh, I'm not saying it's not safe now, but. It's it's not sustainable in the condition that it's in. So those are the two critical things that we've got to move forward on. And I'll work very closely with Hilltop to get some good numbers. Um, and we'll start working through this. Mr. Powell, within that uh notebook, and you'll also see it at the nineteenth because we're asking you to bring your calendar. Shows a calendar that we need to be looking at to issue certificates of obligation. Uh, it shows it going into September. We're actually going to push it to where we're do, we have everything done by September one. Because of legislation that is sitting uh before uh the state right now that would. Change the ways that cities can issue certificates of obligation. So we're going to move as quickly as we can on this and to the contractor is going to want that assurance that the city. Um, is is going to be able to pay the bill that for the contract that we have. Um, so we we've got to give them an assurance too that we are going to issue uh certificates of obligations to pay for. This entire thing, and I appreciate the contractor uh holding the bid until. Uh, mid-May to give us a chance to go through all of this to figure out what we need to do, but. Uh, if we award the bid tonight, which I hope we do, we can get uh with our engineer and get busy on this. No more uh dragging our feet. This is number one priority and it's got to get going quickly.
So you can start turning in.
Well, when we get to that next agenda item, then we can go there. Is there any other questions on this one? Okay.
I mean, Nick, uh, next time on the agenda is item number fourteen to consider and take necessary action. To award a contractor bid with the wastewater treatment plant and authorize mayor in our city council, I'm sorry, city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Mayor and council, uh Park Hill has uh provided a letter of recommendation to award. Uh, the construction contract for the Levelline New one point eight MGD wastewater treatment plant. Uh, be awarded to MH Civil Constructors Inc., including all base bid proposed items for a total contract amount of twenty six million, two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. And authorize the mayor and or city manager to execute all necessary documents for said. Construction contract. Um, we are asking you to move forward on that. Um, typically, once it's approval's done. Thirty to forty five days it takes, gets the contract, everything together and get this moving. Do you have any update on that, sir? Is that normally?
That's.
That's pushing it, I know.
That's that's pushing it. But it's the contract contractor, but soon the contracts begin, we'll have to use bonding. Uh, both performance and binding bonds. And it comes back and the city reviews that and uh. We need attorney review, signing, we get those back from you guys, and we'll set up a pre-construction conference. Uh, we're chosen to do it. And uh, most are perceived. We're not, we don't start speeding instantly. We speed up a little bit, first of all. Uh, if those move in early, you don't forget, you go ahead and turn those in, get those turned around. That's what we do. Eat that off that.
Let's continue, I'm sorry.
There.
A contingency? Is there a contingency?
There's a contingency in this. It's about five percent. Uh, which which is.
Half of them.
About one point three million dollars. Normally, we're in the ten to fifteen percent, but we're tightening this down as much as we can.
Is that?
No.
I don't think it's adequate, but I think we've got to get this thing started, get busy, get moving, and as I said earlier. We've got to watch every item that we possibly can in and to make this happen and. Um, Mayor, I know there was discussion um. Previous meeting regarding um potentially changing engineers on this. I'm recommending we stay with Park Hill. Um, we've had some extensive meetings with them, but. I don't think it's wise right now to change horses in the middle of the stream. Um, I'm wanting to move forward with them and. They need to know the sense, and I think they do. They need to understand the sense of urgency of. Pushing this thing as hard as we can to get it underway as quick as possible.
And to monitor it like this, like we don't have any more dollars. We don't have anymore. There's no extra plus at the end of the rainbow. It has to come in. And with this budget, it has to.
And any time that they feel or see or hear or gut feeling that this thing is coming in higher. Or a project or an item was X and is coming in three X or two X, we need to know that immediately.
Levels of communication have been stellar. I know that that's been communicated. I know it has.
Mayor, I'm going to the council to take necessary action to award a contract bid for wastewater treatment plant and authorize the mayor and the city council. Uh, city manager, I'm sorry, to execute all necessary documents.
Need to mention, who's going to get that?
The contract is for MH Civil Constructors Inc. at a base bid proposal of twenty six million, two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars.
That's it. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With that, motion carries. I'll be praying. Next time on the agenda is the city manager report, staff updates, project updates, staff citizen recognition, items of community interest. No action will be taken.
Mayor, members of council, uh, lay the copy of this on the dais. Uh, I will be in Austin tomorrow at the Capitol as the Senate will read the names of Crystal Goford. And Jonathan Quarter in recognition of Senate Bill three oh five. Regarding the addition of animal control officers to the move over law. Um. The Quarter family and the Goford family are already in Austin. They will be there tomorrow. Um, for them to read the names, uh Captain McDonald is there and. Taylor uh is also there, so uh we uh, this is a. A great honor uh in memorance of our uh lost animal control officers, and as I've said before, when we build this new. Animal services facility, we will find a way to further honor them as we do this facility. Main Street Board will meet uh May eighth here at City Hall. Uh, special city council meeting to canvas election uh next Monday at six. I already know one council member is not available. Uh, hope the rest of y'all shouldn't be more than thirty minutes. Um. Thursday, May fifteenth, uh eleven to two uh food and food trucks downtown. Also, L E D C will be meeting at that day here at noon at City Hall. May nineteenth is the next regular scheduled meeting. Uh, mind you, please have your. Calendars available, especially if you know you're going on vacation, so we can uh for that. Uh, May thirtieth, which is a Friday, is a tentative date for the retirement celebration for Captain McDonald.
Question for James on any of those? I actually have one thing I'd like to add, and it's ram. It's sure our good.
No.
So excited. I wa, I'm just so excited that, you know, we had the May twenty ninth storm and here it is now. May the the fifth and this morning they picked up our final totaled vehicle from that storm. And we got back our final hail damage repaired vehicle um just two days ago, so we finally have our entire fleet. Well, we've got the six that just got hauled away, but we've got the entire fleet that was damaged and able to be repaired back, so that just happened in the last two days. So we're excited about that.
Yes. Hey, at this time, the city council, the city of Levelline, we're convenient to executive session. What, I'm sorry?
We don't need to do that, Mayor.
We're not doing it?
No, ma'am.
Oh. Okay. Now we execute a session. Now we execute a session.
Yeah, ma'am.
Okay.
Could I ask you a question? Our schedule for June?
That's what we're talking about, May nineteenth.
June.
I know, he said on May nineteenth.
We're going to send them, I'm fine.
Yes, sir. The May nineteenth meeting, we're going. Do our best to set the schedule for June, July, August and September.
We.
And I end September, can I say I'm not feeling well?
Right.
Have we never? Anything else? With that, we are adjourned.